We'll call the meeting of the Minot City Council to order today for Monday, April 18th, 2022. It is 5:30 in the afternoon. I appreciate everyone being here for the meeting. I would ask that everyone go ahead and put their electronic devices on silent or on vibrate. We'll keep the distractions down to a minimum this afternoon. Roll call, please.
Evans?
Here.
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pittner?
Here.
Padugula?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Sitma?
Here. Number two is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, given the nature of the storm over the last nearly week here, we're going to make one minor change to our agenda this evening, and that is moving item 7.1 to our next discussion item at the front of the meeting. 7.1 is the approval of the emergency declaration resolution. This is an emergency declaration being submitted for approval, so if funding reimbursement is available for the snowstorm, we have a declaration in place. I would look to our city manager for perhaps a short update on where we are, and I do have a little bit of information as well regarding a phone call this afternoon with General Dormand, the National Guard and Department of Emergency Services. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and if you don't mind, I'll probably turn some time over to Dan Jonison, our Public Works Director. Him and his staff have probably the most comprehensive update, but obviously, we sustained 36 inches of snowfall in a 48-hour period. As I understand, it's a historic event for this community. It's been a long time since we've seen a blizzard and never one in that magnitude, and so it's had some impact. I want to thank several staff members and categories of people that have been very, very much a part of the solution and the response for the community and where we're at today, and I think they've done a great job in getting us back open and operational throughout the community. Obviously, first and foremost, our public works staff, who've been working 12-hour shifts, 24 on for the entire weekend, not to forget that it's also Easter weekend, so a time that most of us have plans with family and those kinds of things, and had to make last-minute changes to take care of the needs of the public as opposed to privately being at home with friends and family during an important holiday for many. So, again, clearing up and having, you know, access to pretty much all the roads within a 48-hour period was phenomenal and I think a great response, and that's mainly due to our public works staff and their dedication. We had 33 employees on staff that could have responded, and 32 all responded, one that couldn't, had lived out in the rural area, and roads weren't quite clear enough yet, and far enough outside of our jurisdiction to get them and get them to us. But, and then, hand-in-hand with that would be our contractors that we employed, and I'll let Dan talk a little bit about that here in a minute. But, we had some contractors and some local farmers that all came in or were part of the solution as well. Our airport staff that pretty much lived at the airport for a few days, trying to get the airport back open as quickly as possible, dealt with some equipment issues, including one of our snow blowers that caught fire and is a complete loss at this point. So, if the blizzard wasn't enough, having a fire in the middle of it was fun as well. And I guess that segues into our public safety staff with our police and fire that were very dedicated in getting out. And so each one of these departments on their own did a great job, but also the teamwork between all of them, between our police, our fire, and our public works crews, responding to emergency calls, you know, getting a plow out in front to get to a call. I stopped at Station 1 on Friday and, you know, heard an account of, you know, when a couple moms go into labor, and we were able to get them to the hospital in time, in part because of the response of our fire staff and our public works crews getting out there with graders and getting access to the facility or to the residents, so that our fire crews and our paramedic services could get in as quickly as possible. So, a lot of great stories that came out of good public service. And then also, I want to thank our Public Information Officer for doing a great job in communication throughout this storm on social media and our website. I've heard a lot of positive feedback with the job well done, with the timeliness of the information, the accuracy of the information, and a little bit of a sense of humor through that process as well. That was very appreciated. And finally, my last thank you would just go to the citizens of Minot. You know, multiple examples of good neighbors getting out with equipment, snow blowers, shovels, helping out neighbors, you know, shoveling out driveways or helping people get unstuck in the snow, and overall, just being patient throughout the community, traffic-wise and those types of things, being good citizens. To me, that is the magic of Minot, is the people here that makes the difference, and it's becoming more and more uncommon throughout the country, but it's still alive and well and strong in Minot. So, my thank you to those groups of people. We wouldn't be able to drive around town and resume life as we know it without those key categories of people making a positive difference over the last four or five days. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director to give you a brief update on impacts going forward and some other statistics and information.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Dan's Public Works Director Jonison is coming to the front. Just for the totals, again, 36 inches between that Tuesday to Wednesday through the storm, and additional two inches the following day on Thursday, followed by 10 more inches on Saturday, Sunday. So, that puts us right around level four feet of snow from Tuesday to Sunday, which is unprecedented. Mr. Jonison.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon. Just a brief rundown on, I guess, what we saw, what we did, and what we're doing going forth. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday night, our concentration was maintaining and keeping our snow emergency routes accessible for the public that was still out there and our emergency services. A lot of our time during shift change, when it got really bad, was assisting getting our public works personnel in, even the ones that lived in town, you know, didn't have the means to get in, they were stuck in the road. So, we ran equipment out, got them in. We also tried to assist PD and the fire on their shift changes when they needed to get people home and people in, and as the city manager said, in responding. So, our concentration was to first provide assistance to the police and fire when they hit a call and they couldn't get somewhere, and then to maintain the snow routes as good as we could. Thursday afternoon into the evening, it was zero visibility. I had a call from blade operator that had both his doors open on his blade, trying to see the road in front of him. At that time, we decided it wasn't safe for anybody to be out on the outskirts where it was blowing the worst. So, we had about half of our fleet stuck in the ditch at the time, so we continued to try to get them out, and we moved blades down to fire stations 1, 2, and 3, and the police department, and concentrating on making sure that they had access to get out to respond. We also brought in seven different contractors on Thursday, with a total of 20 pieces of equipment, loaders, blades, to assist us with keeping things open, opening things up in the residential areas, and getting the city moving again. Landfill personnel came in, worked on helping opening up alleys where garbage collection would be picked up this week, and I think they did a great job of that. By Saturday afternoon, all of the areas were passable, you know, other than a couple isolated places here and there that we missed, but we got back to them. Thanks again to the contractors. Like I said, we had seven different contractors. They had the same problems we did when, you know, we asked them to come in and help, you know, their personnel were stranded, and, you know, they sent equipment out and did whatever they could to get personnel in to help us battle this event. So, a big thank you to all of them that helped us with that. Crews began blading the second round of snow on Sunday. We had intended on giving them Saturday night and into Sunday off and go with a crew change, where days went on nights, nights went on days. We tried to give them a day off so they can actually get some sleep before they come on the night shifts, and that didn't work out very well. We called the crews out Sunday morning right away to start blading the next nine or 10 inches that we got. But I'll say, they are always pretty upbeat and kept going, doing what was asked of them and got things opened up. Some of the contractors also assisted with widening out some of the narrow roadways on Sunday. We continued this morning with widening routes. We have let the contractors go home, with the exception of about four pieces of equipment. Our intention now is to continue widening all of the roadways that are narrow and have the contractors follow behind with the loaders and open up driveways, because we know it's going to be some tall windows and tough for the residents to get open, so we're going to have the loaders open up the driveways behind the crews as they widen out all the areas of town. We do intend to do some minor hauling, burdick, which is some very narrow lanes. We need to try to get back, and perhaps some of the side streets off of Broadway where it's narrow, we need to haul it off. We've run out of places to pile the snow. So, our night crew is actually going to start tonight hauling some of burdick and get some of that off. Otherwise, our day crew will continue with widening, and like I said, we'll keep pushing it back. So, depending on what the next snow event brings us, hopefully, we have a little bit of room to put some of this snow, but we'll see. If it ends up being rain or snow or what, I guess it's unknowing it now. Just a little bit of information for you. When we have the contractors working, the cost was about $40,000 a day for the equipment that we had working. So, like I said, we're letting the contractors go, with the exception of a few. I think we're in a pretty good situation now, where everyone has had access, opened up to them, and the street is at least passable. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director Jonison. Any questions for Dan at this time? Alderman Padugula?
Yes, I wanted to join the city manager in complimenting your staff for their hard work. There's something new I noticed this year I've never seen before is having contractors or staff clean out ends of driveways. It kind of affected me personally, first time I've ever seen that in my neighborhood, which is very good, because there was a six-foot pile of snow at the end of my driveway. And try as much as I could with a snow shovel and a snow blower, I can only get maybe half of it done. So, what was different this time? Why were they asked to clean up ends of driveways?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Padugula, with an event this large, you know, our gates were essentially useless. I mean, they did nothing on this. You know, when you're pushing that big of windows, you know, I guess I could show you some of the pictures of what's left of the gates on some of our blades. They're pretty heavy-duty, and they're literally ripped apart, nothing left of them. So, you know, under a normal snow event, we can use the gates, and we can prevent most of the snow from going into a driveway. But, an event this size, we can't. So, you know, we said where they were able to help get them open, and like I said, you know, with as wet of snow and frozen chunks that you see with this, we just decided that was the proper thing to do. You know, if we could help and get the driveways open and remove some of it, we would. Like I said, we're going to continue to do that as we widen, because we will be leaving some very large, very tall, heavy ridges in the driveways, and we intend to use the contractors to help remove that.
That's very good. Usually, we get complaints about that, and typically, it's the end of the driveway, so this was a marked improvement, and people were very appreciative of that, and I certainly was. So, thank you, folks.
Any other questions for Director Jonison at this time? Thank you, sir. Just leading into the discussion here on the necessity for the emergency declaration resolution here, phone call this afternoon with North Dakota National Guard General Dormand and Department of Emergency Services. We had Darren Hanson and Justin Mezner on the line with the discussion of the potential for a disaster declaration coming either from the federal government or from the state up in an attempt. There is a dollar amount that essentially we would be working towards as a county, is a million dollar. First, we would have to qualify that this was a record snow event. I don't think too many of us are going to argue that this wasn't a record event, however, that does have to be verified through the National Weather Service. Then, there's a number of formulas that also have to be met to be able to quantify the thresholds for a federal disaster declaration. So, with the help of the city manager and the finance folks, they've been tracking all of the expenses, including the $40,000 a day for the general contractors. However, with federal guidelines, they pick two days where the most expense is drawn from to quantify that total expense of those dollars. So, as we discussed, this is part of the process to work through if there is in fact a federal disaster declaration. If we don't declare it, there's a lot less chance we would qualify if in fact that would come down. So, there's still some very high benchmarks to reach. This doesn't necessarily mean that we, as a city, are going to qualify for those reimbursements in any form. We would expect a number of different processes to happen between now and June. If approved, that's the time that that would come, and then likely, no dollars would actually be received until either July, August, or September for that reimbursement. So, I just wanted to be, wanted the council and the community to know that as well, that this doesn't necessarily free up dollars from the federal government. However, this declaration does free up our emergency funds to be able to tap into, to pay down some of those costs, rather than pulling them from our general reserves or budget itself. So, with that, if there's any questions or comments before a motion. If not, I would look for a motion. Alderwoman Evans?
I make a motion to approve the Resolution 3756 for the declaration of the snow emergency.
We have motion to approve, second by Alderman Pittner. Any discussion? Any discussion? I'll just add, and this is just an echo from the city manager and likely a number of people throughout the community. A big thank you to all of the folks that operated the heavy equipment. That goes from the city staff to the private contractors to the neighbors. We were actually just commenting prior that didn't realize how many people own bobcats or tool cats within the community, and how many other people volunteered to help out their neighbors and to take care of just about any snow moving that they could handle. So, a big thank you to all of the residents that pitched in and helped out. It's hard to believe that four feet of snow fell, but it's also even more amazing yet how quickly we were able to get the community back open. And for the folks that maybe have a question about our snow removal plan, I think that this is proof and evidence that it does work. There are a lot of other communities that did not receive nearly the amount of snow that we did, and talking with some of the other folks, we've done well. Every plan has the opportunity for improvement, but we're definitely on the right track.
Can I have a PS?
Alderwoman Evans?
So, and also to our first responders. I know fire and police didn't take a break as well, and I just heard a story before the meeting about an assisted living facility that had a medical emergency, and the fire crews came with the big, the fire truck from the airport and plowed through the snow to get this person, you know, to the hospital. And I think that happened all throughout the days of the storm, and so it was just amazing to see our first responders, our public works, everybody just, just like getting us through this and, you know, getting people safe and to where they needed to be. So, I know your folks are probably tired, just like Dan's folks are, and not looking forward to another weekend, but we, it really made me proud to be a Minotter this weekend and see our city staff just rocking it. It's just, and to hear residents seeing that and appreciating that, you know, is really a good thing, that they can see their taxpayer dollars used to get us dug out quickly and keep us safe and people, you know, safe with the police and firefighters. So, thank you, Chief Kug and Chief Kelly. We appreciate your people too.
Last call for discussion. Motion is to approve the emergency declaration resolution. Please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes. Motion is approved. We'll jump back into our regular order here for our agenda this afternoon. Number three is our city manager's report. Mr. Stewart?
I think I pretty much already gave the city manager report. So, unless there's any questions with regards to the report that, or the memo that's been drafted and is in the council packet available to the council and the public, I don't have anything further to report this evening.
Any questions for the city manager? All right. Next, we move on to Section 4. This is a public hearing. This is the Nichols move. The area that is under consideration for the moving application is 5325 Zaharia Drive, Southeast Minot. The property is surrounded by similar single-family dwellings as well as a single-story manufactured homes with similar detached and detached garages. The immediate area also contains numerous vacant lots. The homeowner stated that the 528-square-foot detached garage will be moved and is to be placed on a preconditioned concrete slab. The inspection department has received the application for the building permit for the foundation for the building and is ready to issue pending council approval. The recommendations before the, to the council are nine of them. Recommend the city council approve the relocation of the detached garage from 40631st Avenue, Southeast Lot 101, Minot 58701, also known as the Interchange 6th Edition Lot 1 Block 2 to Lot 20 Interchange 7th Edition to 5325 Zaharia Drive, Southeast, Minot 58701, also known as the Copper Sunrise 2nd Edition Lot 7 Block 1, subject to the following conditions. One, a $10,000 completion bond must be posted with the city money prior to the issuance of any permit for the work. Two, an approved approach permit assigned to 4930th Avenue, Southeast issued Nedrose Township. Three, the application and approval of mechanical, electrical, plumbing, building permits for all proposed construction. And four, coordinate all relocation activities with public utilities and traffic authorities. Five, approved foundation designs with compliance with the City of Minot Building Code. Six, if required, plumbing, electrical, and HVAC systems must be brought into compliance with the current code requirements for the City of Minot. Seven, all work for the new location must be compliant with the City of Minot Building Codes and zoning ordinances. Eight, the exterior of the structure must be one consistent color arrangement of colors after relocation. And nine, property must be provided with proper site drainage and must be landscaped in a manner similar to the surrounding properties. Again, this is a public hearing for anyone to speak in favor, in opposition, or neutral to the recommendations before us. One more time for comments for the public hearing on the recommendations before us. Seeing none, one of the wishes of council, Alderman Pittner?
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and approve the item with recommendations from staff.
Second. Motion by Alderman Pittner to approve, second by Alderman Janser. Any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Final call for discussion. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Section 5 is considered the report of the planning commission or a number of items on the planning commission with several public hearings. The first, 5.1, a public hearing west 67 feet of the north 250 foot of the lot bio addition. The public hearing request and application from Ken and Lynette Simonson, owner for the future land use map amendment from the industrial to downtown mixed-use and zoning map amendment from M1 Light Industrial District to CBD Central Business District. The proposed for the request is to facilitate retail activities, including a commercial kitchen. The legal description for the property is west 67 feet of the north 250 foot of Lot 2 Bio Edition. The property address is 400 East Central Avenue. The recommendations to council is to approve the following in alignment with the planning commission recommendations. First, resolution number to amend the future land use map for the subject properties from industrial to downtown mixed-use. And two, ordinance and the first rating for a zoning map amendment from M1 Light Industrial District to District to CBD Central Business District. Again, this is, this is a public hearing for anyone to come forward and speak either in favor, in opposition, or neutral to the proposal before us. One more call on a public hearing for comment. Seeing none, what are the wishes of council? Alderman Janser.
Mr. Mayor, I move we close the public hearing and approve the item.
Motion by Alderman Janser to close the public hearing and approve the item. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Olson. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Final call for discussion. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 5.2 is another public hearing, Minot HS Second Edition. Public hearing request on an application from Sean Weeks, Representative Jared Edwards and Scott Mom on behalf of Minot Public School, owner for a preliminary plat to be known as Minot High School Second Edition, consolidate three lots into one and simultaneously vacate the adjoining portion of the unimproved right-of-way denoted as 23rd Avenue Northwest and 22nd Street Northwest. The application also requires a zoning map amendment request from C2 General Commercial 2P, public zoning for a future land use map amendment from the commercial, public, semi-public for the purpose of constructing a new high school with athletic facilities. The legal description for the property is lots, lots 1 through 3 ING addition. The addition for the properties, rather, the address for the properties is 2121st Avenue Northwest. The recommendations to council is to approve the following in alignment with the planning commission's recommendation. There are four recommendations. The first, master plan as provided with attachment A, a major subdivision preliminary plat for the Minot High School Second Edition as provided in attachment B. Three, resolution number to amend the future land use map for the subject property from commercial to public semi-public district. And four, an ordinance on the first reading for a zoning map amendment from C2 General Commercial District 2P Public District. Again, this is a public hearing for anyone to come forward and speak either in favor, in opposition, or neutral to the recommendations to the council. One more call for comments on the public hearing. Seeing none, what are the wishes of council? Alderwoman Olson.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close a public hearing and approve the item with staff recommendations.
Motion by Alderwoman Olson to close the public hearing and approve the recommendations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Pittner. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Final call for discussion. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Our final public hearing is Lot 1 Prairie Green Seventh Edition plus half of portion of the vacated 36th Avenue Southwest. The public hearing request on an application by Roger Mazurik and Nick Gray on behalf of the Young Men's Christian Association of Minot owner for a zoning map amendment from R1 Single Family Residential District to C2 General Commercial District for the purpose of aligning the subject property zoning closer to the existing use of the indoor-outdoor recreation. In addition, the request includes a future land use amendment from low-density residential to commercial. The legal description for the property is Lot 1 Prairie Green Seventh Edition plus half of portion of the vacated 36th Avenue Southwest. The address for the property is 3515 16th Street Southwest. The recommendations to the council to approve the following alignment with the planning commission recommendations is, one, resolution number to amend, to amend the future land use map for the subject property from low-density residential to commercial. And two, an ordinance on first reading for a zoning map amendment from R1 Single Family Residential District to C2 General Commercial District. Again, this is a public hearing for anyone to come forward and speak either in favor, in opposition, or neutral to the recommendations to council. One more call for public comment on this, on these recommendations. Seeing none, what are the wishes of council?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
I move we close the public hearing and approve upon with staff's recommendations.
Motion to close the public hearing and approve the recommendations by Alderman Ross, second by Alderman Janser. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Final call for discussion. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Motion is approved. There are two remaining items on the planning commission's agenda. We can either take them together or separately. What are the wishes of council? Alderman Pittner.
Mayor, I move approval on the remaining items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Ross. Motion is to approve both 5.4 and 5.5 with recommendations from the planning commission. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Final call for discussion. Motion is to approve 5.4 and 5.5 as recommended. Please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. This is Section 6 under our agenda, the consent items. We have 23 different items with our consent. Within the consent agenda, I've already been asked to pull 6.18. Are there any other items that need to be pulled for individual discussion? Anyone from the audience, if they want to pull an individual item for discussion, otherwise they will be passed with recommendations of staff. Seeing none, what are the wishes of council?
Move approval on all of the items except for 6.18.
Motion by Alderwoman Olson to approve all items except for 6.18, which will be taken individually. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Pittner. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Final call for discussion. Motion is to approve 6.1 through 6.17, 6.19 through 6.23. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 6.18 is purchase of the 2022 patrol vehicles. The police department budgeted for five all-wheel-drive patrol cars to be purchased in 2022. The police department is also budgeted for two investigator vehicles for 2022. The recommendations to the city council is to accept the quote by Nelson Auto, Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to purchase the 7 2022 Ford Interceptor utility vehicles using the North Dakota State contract for a total of $254,768.72. Alderwoman Olson.
Thank you. Could we have the police chief come forward?
Yes. Chief Klug.
So, thank you, Chief Klug. Every year, the police department purchases vehicles. And a few years back, there was some concern on whether or not the police vehicles were being purchased locally. And I noticed that this is an out-of-state dealer. However, it's a state contract. If you could just kind of explain that to us so that we would know whether there was a local bid put in or what the details are related to it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Olson. We learned through the process of waiting for this year's vehicles to arrive, we've received one of the four. The other three are still waiting to be finished production and be shipped. But we learned that they had already shut down 2022 production. So through that process, we were in discussion with Nelson Auto about our current vehicles. And they said they had ordered 20 additional vehicles that were unclaimed at this point. We reached out to Wesley's and just asked, is it possible to still order 2022 vehicles? And they told us that it was not. Production was shut down. They didn't order any additional vehicles. So based on that, we put together what our specs are, and we reached back out to them for a quote, and it came in under the budgeted price for the seven vehicles. We don't know what next year, we don't, A, we don't know when 2023's will begin production, and we also don't know what the price will be when they do start producing them. So we thought this was at least the fiscally responsible thing to do and still be able to maintain our fleet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions for our police chief at this time? Mr. City Manager.
Just to point out again, in agreement with Chief Klug, you know, right now in the vehicle industry, there's a short supply and demand is up. So as we've experienced with purchasing some of our trucks for public works and those kinds of things, a lot of times we can't even find the vehicles to be honored at purchase price under state contract. So I think Chief Klug has done a good job here, just finding some vehicles that, with a dealership that'd be willing to honor the state contract, because that's hard to find now anyway, let alone the supply chain issues with even finding the 22 models of the vehicles. So I think it's good due diligence by Chief Klug on behalf of the citizens of Minot to save some money and find these and meet these needs in a time that's extremely difficult to do that and still keep it within budget, so.
Any questions for Chief Klug at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I'll add one more thing.
Please continue.
In addition, historically, we've purchased used vehicles for our investigations vehicles. And being able to come in under budget with two brand-new vehicles in place of two used, well, it's hard to find a used car, too. So our, right now, our investigations vehicles are between 2007 and 2020. So we normally keep them 10-plus years. So we're hoping that a new vehicle will also expand that, or at least make it a decent vehicle for 10 years.
Thank you, Chief. Looking for a motion?
Move approval.
Motion by Alderwoman Olson to approve. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Janser. Discussion on the motion. Alderwoman Olson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just, I want to thank police chief, too. I know that this has been a concern in the past, but we are living in very unique times. And I think that he did find a good alternative for us. And I think that anyone that is concerned about buying local, appreciate the fact that he did reach out to a local company, and they were in agreement with this, too. So having sat on the, by a local committee, that's exactly what the expectations were, that conversations or communication would be had with local companies. He did that. This still seems like the best result for all of us, so I appreciate it and I'm glad that there was an alternative, glad that there was some way to make it work.
Further discussion on the motion? Final call for discussion. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us into the Section 4 action items. We've already taken care of 7.1. 7.2 is the skid steer loader trade budget amendment. Over the last few years, Public Works has bid multiple skid steers with a guaranteed annual trade amount. When the 2022 budget was put together, the machine numbers were increased to cover the annual price increase, but they weren't increased high enough. Recommendations to the council is to approve a budget amendment to the 2022 Water and Sewer Department budget for the purchase of the two new skid steer loaders.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Janser to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Olson. Discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Final call for discussion. Motion is to approve the item. Please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 7.3 is the SWIFT Action F, the Outfall Pipe Cleaning Final Payment Project Number 3135.2F. The project was bid to remove silt that has been built up in large pipes and gate well structures that control the flow in and out of the dead loops in Minot. This is the final portion of the work that comprises of our original SWIFT plan for repair and maintenance of the existing flood control levee system in Minot. The recommendations to the council is to approve the final payment in the amount of $46,753.05 to Subservice Incorporated for the SWIFT F Pipe Cleaning Project. And two, approve the budget amendment in the amount of $24,690 to cover the quantity overage of the portion of the project.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderwoman Olson to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Janser. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Final call for discussion. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 7.4 is the City Works in Paymentis Integrations Statement of Work 4423. Staff and consultants are in the final stages of the City Works implementation. One of the final tasks is integrating the city's online credit card processing with Paymentis. The recommendation is to the council is to approve the statement of work with Paymentis for the City Works integration and authorize the mayor to sign the statement of work. And two, approve and attach the budget, approve the attached budget amendment and use of the general fund cash reserve to pay for the integration. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Janser to approve, second by Alderman Pittner. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Final call for discussion. Motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 7.5 is the proposed ordinance copy machine purchase. The current copier and printer in the police department investigation divisions are having mechanical issues and is either in need of repair or replacement. This purchase will resolve both issues and increase the efficiency of printing and copying while also lowering the overall cost of printing color images. The recommendations to council is to approve the proposed ordinance to amend the 2021 budget to transfer funds from the general fund to capital equipment fund for the purchase of a color copy machine and authorize the chief of police to sign the acceptance of the quote for the purchase.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderwoman Olson to approve. Is there a second? Alderman Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have, how quickly will they be able to deliver it?
Mr. City Manager? Or actually, Chief Klug?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Alderman Ross, they're telling us two to three months, maybe? And that was pretty standard. That was one of the things we checked when we did solicit the quote is what's the delivery time? And they're all in the two-to-five-month range. One thing I want to point out, I think I have a typo, I think that should be 2022 budget, not 2021. So.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
For the correction on that, does the motion maker in second agree on the correction for the budget? Okay. Final call for discussion on the motion to approve. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 7.4 is the City Works in Paymentus Integrations Statement of Work 4423. Staff and consultants are in the final stages of the City Works implementation. One of the final tasks is integrating the city's online credit card processing with Paymentis. The recommendation is to the council is to approve the statement of work with Paymentis for the City Works integration and authorize the mayor to sign the statement of work and to approve and attach the budget, approve the attached budget amendment and use of the general fund cash reserve to pay for the integration. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Janzer to approve. Second by Alderman Pittner. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Final call for discussion. Motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Janzer?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 7.5 is the proposed ordinance copy machine purchase. The current copier and printer in the police department investigation divisions are having mechanical issues and is either in need of repair or replacement. This purchase will resolve both issues and increase the efficiency of printing and copying while also lowering the overall cost of printing color images. The recommendations to council is to approve the proposed ordinance to amend the 2021 budget to transfer funds from the general fund to capital equipment fund for the purchase of a color copy machine and authorize the chief of police to sign the acceptance of the quote for the purchase.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderwoman Olson to approve. Is there a second?
Is there a second? Second.
Second by Alderman Ross. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. City Manager?
If I may, I know I've talked previously, at least through some of our budget conversations, about potentially consolidating the city's copy machines and printers across the organization to get some cost savings. This is something that staff has been looking at. Unfortunately, this is one of the results of COVID with supply chain issues. One, getting contractors that are willing to come and bid, to even consider that option for us is a challenge. And two, access to copiers and printers with the current supply chain issues have also been a challenge. So the ability to implement that recommendation at this time is not feasible at this point, but it is something that we'll continue to watch as staff that when some of those supply chain issues lift and some of these options are back on the table, we'll take a more in-depth look at it at that time.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Hopefully, as the new city hall comes together, outside of this specific issue, some of those can be hopefully alleviated by that time. Any discussion on the motion to approve?
Just a quick question.
Alderman Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have, how quickly will they be able to deliver it?
Mr. City Manager? Or actually, Chief Klug?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Alderman Ross, they're telling us two to three months, maybe? And that was pretty standard. That was one of the things we checked when we did solicit the quote is what's the delivery time? And they're all in the two-to-five-month range. One thing I want to point out, I think I have a typo, I think that should be 2022 budget, not 2021. So.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
For the correction on that, does the motion maker in second agree on the correction for the budget? Okay. Final call for discussion on the motion to approve. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That is the end of the action item section. The next section is personal appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward.
Wait, we had the aircraft.
I'm sorry. 7.6 has been pulled.
Oh, right.
For individual consideration later or other funding mechanisms to be considered. I apologize for skipping over that, but that has been pulled for the time being. So that does take us to personal appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward and speak on any item that is or is not on our agenda. I would ask that if you do come forward, that you just state your name and your city of residence, and it will allow up for up to five minutes. Final call for public appearances. Seeing none, that takes us into section nine. This is the miscellaneous and discussion items. We have the 2022 to 2026 Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP 2677. Mr. Lance Meyer is here. Every year, the city department submits, submit projects for the inclusion into the five-year capital improvement plan, also known as the CIP. The plan becomes the guiding document for the city staff to program and budget capital of construction projects throughout the city. The recommendation to adopt the plan will be presented at the May 2 meeting. Mr. Meyer?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just wait till Derek pulls this up. My plan tonight was just to walk you through a quick presentation, just kind of hit the highlights on the 193-page document. These things get kind of lengthy with all the data that we put into these. So that's why I wanted to get it to you a couple weeks early so you have time to look at it, and then another couple weeks to look through it, ask questions, make suggestions. This is why it's a draft document, so we'll fire away. Here's our process. I think you've all seen this before. It's, it's what we as department heads do. We, we come up with our requested projects. We run them through a series of tests that we have in-house and then work with the finance department to find funding sources for each one of those projects and then assemble those in a document and present them to you, which is where we're at tonight. So we wanted you to take a look at these and provide us some feedback. If there's any adjustments we need to make, we can talk through that here in the next couple of weeks and then bring that back to you for recommended approval. Then, of course, you know, anything in budget year 2023 would be approved as part of the budget process. So the CIP is more like our guiding document, but nothing actually gets funded until it's approved in the budget, just so you understand that. Just a quick summary of where everything came in, just over $536 million over the next five years. The majority of that, a little over 50%, is coming from federal and state funds. So again, we do a pretty good job at trying to find outside funding sources to fund the majority of our projects. You'll see sales tax, our local sales tax plays a big part of what we do. You'll see there towards the bottom, the local revenue bonds, those are water and sewer bonds. Those are geared towards two large sanitary sewer projects towards the very end of our capital improvement plan. Those would fund our mechanical wastewater treatment plant and a large lift station rehab project, but those are dependent on many factors. So it's likely that those would continue to slide to the right in our CIP, but we list them there because it is a potential project need that may come up. This is a breakdown for department. You'll see the big spenders here are my department, of course, in engineering, and our public works department. Public works primarily driven by flood control. We put all of flood control phasing inside that department since they are the ones that are, that are managing that. Engineering primarily, our large projects have to do with large transportation projects like Broadway reconstruction, 16th Street reconstruction. Those are big-ticket items that add up pretty quickly. This is our, our funding load by year. In a perfect world, we try to level load this if we could so that we're spending near the same amount every year on, on capital projects. However, with these big swings in flood control phasing, it's really hard to do that. You know, when you have projects that come in at $60 or $80 million, depending on the phase, it's just really hard to balance that out with the rest of the needs. So you'll see these, these big peaks and valleys as we try to work that funding through the system. If you take out some of those larger projects, we actually do a pretty good job at level loading this. Since I have the mic and I get to put this together for all the departments, I get a couple of minutes to walk you through a couple of my projects that I think needed maybe a little bit more explanation. The first one here is a streetlight LED conversion that we've talked about in the past. Last year, the DOT awarded us just over $400,000 in COVID relief funds. Has to be used on a federal aid route, has to be for a transportation project purpose. So our scope is pretty narrow. $400,000 sounds like a lot, but it really doesn't buy you a lot when it comes to transportation improvements. My staff is, is also, we're right at the red line here of about what we can handle with all of our projects. So we were looking for a low-impact to staff, but a high return on investment type of project. That's where we came up with this LED street lighting so we can take several of our federal aid corridors and convert the high-pressure sodium lighting to LED, ultimately saving the city and the taxpayers' electrical costs over the long run. This plan sets fairly easy to put together. We would design that in-house and manage it. So we think that would be a good use of these funds. You know, if you have other ideas for them, we'd, of course, be interested, but just with all those factors, we think this would fit into, fit in the program pretty well. So if you have any thoughts on that, maybe I may second, we can talk through that. Otherwise, if the plan is approved as presented, then we would start working with the DOT to program these funds and get that project done probably in 23. The South Broadway reconstruction, we've talked about this a little bit over the course of our Broadway corridor study, and then that came together in a request to the DOT last December that you all approved to, to start programming this project with the DOT. The highlighted sections here on the graphic are the areas that would be reconstructed with that project. We took all of the funding for this. It's about a $30 million project, and we can put it in one year. That's, that's not how this is going to get built. It's going to get phased over time, probably in two to three projects over multiple years. Because we don't have that phasing plan developed yet, we don't even have a consultant on board or this program with the DOT, to be conservative, we just put it in year 2026. That'd be the earliest we could probably fund this, with the understanding that it'll likely be phased out over, over multiple years. The 16th Street interchange rehab project is scheduled for '25. We're working with the DOT on this. It started off as a deck overlay and then we got involved and said, well, hey, wait a minute, but there's some other work that we want to see happen here at the interchange. It is over 30 years old. I remember when I was this high, which is not much shorter than I am now, then pounding piles when I was a little kid. So it was kind of a fun project to watch, and now I get to be part of the rehab for it. But it'll consist of a deck overlay, so it's a couple inches of new concrete on top of the deck. We'll fix the panels that have settled and create the big bump. We'll repaint it. We're going to replace all three of the signals. And our goal is to try to improve the sightlines on that bridge. I think we've all sat at the intersection at 20th Avenue or 22nd Avenue, and you're trying to kind of look over the car there because it's, it's in the way, can't see very well. That's a bad sightline. We call those negative offsets. So we're going to work with the DOT to try to find a way to fix that physically if we can, and that would likely also include some left-turn phasing there. So we want to put those improvements in when we put in the new signals. 16th Street reconstruction, this is about a $10 million project slated for 2025. We talked a little bit about the road diet through part of this project. That'd be from 2nd Avenue to Burdick Expressway. That would be Phase Two of, of that improvement, along with the brand-new roadway. New signals, we can reconstruct Burdick Expressway to concrete about 300 feet on each side to get rid of some of the rutting problems that we have. And then this would all be, south of Burdick, that'd be a brand-new concrete roadway, four lanes with turn lanes is, is what we are anticipating. And then we want to talk a little bit about Ann Street Bridge. So our direction from council a couple of months ago was to bring this project back in the CIP. It's back. Right now, we are projecting this project to go in 2025. However, it is directly tied to flood control phase MI6, meaning that this project can't proceed until that project is done or near completion. Otherwise, we'd have to, we construct a bridge and then deconstruct it and then reconstruct it when we do the flood control. So we want to make sure that these timelines match and that we're, we're doing this project correctly. We had a lot of feedback with BNSF. We were trying to make sure we understand exactly what their intentions were. We need to know their direction so that we can come up with a plan that meets all of their requirements. Based on the feedback that we have, the only real option that we feel we can move forward with is a complete reconstruction of that bridge. The reasons why? The minimum clearance between top of rail and low beam of the bridge is 23 and 1/2 feet. Right now, we're just a hair over 21. And so to raise the existing span, you know, if you, if you picture that going up a couple feet, now you're trying to chase back that elevation in each direction. And with the structure and that kind of age, it's just not feasible to make that work. The other requirement is the abutments are the ends of the bridge. So in the picture behind you, those big concrete pillars, that's what the span sits on. They have to be outside of BNSF's right-of-way. So we're working with them right now to purchase what we need for the flood control improvements. And there'd be about 180-foot wide piece of right-of-way that the railroad would still have. The abutments have to be outside of that. We'd have to acquire new easement from them, and that would be a negotiation with the railroad. And then BNSF also wanted to be made whole for their costs of plan review and flagging and, and those sort of things. That's, that's pretty common on projects that we have with them. So due to those requirements and what, what we've developed is a little bit different plan than what we have out there today. We're looking at a shorter bridge. It would span the BNSF right-of-way and our flood control levee. So we'd build a 214-foot-long bridge versus the 825-foot-long bridge that we have out there today. Because we're constructing a new bridge, the ramps that lead up to the span would be fully ADA compliant. So that's a 5% grade all the way up to the, to the bridge. After you come down out the bridge on the north side, we build the path system to link up to the existing Victoria Bridge, which goes over the river. So we don't want to build another bridge. Let's use the infrastructure that we have. And then there'd be a path system that connects all these bridges together that gets into the, the neighborhoods so that we have connectivity. So I took a stab at trying to come up with a cost estimate for this, and, and I'm, I'm not a bridge engineer. I don't do structures, I do streets and pipes. So we did our, our level best here to try to come up with an estimate. You'll see, this is what I came up with here. I sent this to the public works director. He's built more bridges in his career than I have. And he said, well, you're probably low in a couple of areas, but it's probably within the ballpark, but let's, let's send this to, to Houston Engineering and have them just do a double check in case we missed anything, anything big. Some of the things I really didn't know how to estimate were these bridge ramps, you know, know, how do we get people up to the bridge itself? We had a pretty good idea on the cost of the bridge, that's, that's pretty standard data. So we had them take a look and well, it was way off. So basically, the, the bridge I was pretty accurate on, but the ramps were quite a bit off. So we, we had those adjustments made. So now instead of about two and a half million, we're looking at 4.2 million for construction. You add in your engineering and miscellaneous costs, you had about just a hair under $5 million and now we need to inflate that from today's dollars to a 2025 build. So we used 3%. Who knows if that'll be enough or not, but it should get us pretty close. Now we're sitting at about 5.4 million. Now, what does that buy you? It buys you something that probably looks something similar to this. This is a similar bridge, I'm not sure where this is at, but it was an example that Houston provided. You know, it looks like about a five, maybe six lane roadway. You know, you're spanning some paths and other things. So the, the span would be approximately like this. And then you can see in the background, the concrete ramps that come up back and forth to get people up to the top of that bridge. Now, this is a road bridge, so the clearance between pavement and, and low beam is probably right around that 18, 19 feet. Now, raise that elevation several more feet to get to what the railroad clearance is. And when you do that, then these ramps have to get longer to make that grade work and then the cost goes up. This is a nice looking bridge. We could probably shave a little bit of money off by making it look a little less nice, but I think the intent for this area is to draw people to, you know, whatever becomes of the area on the north side of the, the railroad tracks and then make that connection into downtown. So, you know, if, if we're going to spend this kind of money, I think we'd want it to, to look pretty nice, something similar to this. And then from a plan point of view, this is generally what this would look like. So you'll, you'll see the, that green line, that's the, the levy improvement, the blue is the bridge and the switchback ramps. And then the, the dark gray, black line, that's the path that kind of connects everything back together. So this is the, the basis of design that we're using for the cost estimate. That doesn't mean it's going to look exactly like this, but it's a starting point for us to start budgeting for a project of this magnitude. That is what I have to present to you. Like I said, I try to keep it short. I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of these projects or anything else in the CIP.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. 194 pages, quite, quite the document to go through. Any questions at this time for our engineer, Alderwoman Evans?
What is a federal aid corridor?
So that would be any arterial road in the city that the feds would participate funding on. So this would be like your 16 streets, your 37th avenues, those type of high volume roadways.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, Alderwoman Olson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a few months ago, as you indicated, the council did vote to put this back into the You've done research for us and you've given us information back. At what point would you take more action on it? With it being projected for 2025, when would you need more information from us to move forward? Would you be working on it in the meantime? Or is it just like presentation now and then you'd come back in 2024 and look for funding? Can it go through that process for us?
Right, so, so right now, because the project is a, is a ways off, the way that I would envision this is probably early in '24. We'd come back to council and, and start the engineering process. So we get the engineering dollars going, get someone under contract to start the, the design and the coordination with the railroad. And then we would anticipate a 2025 project. Now again, remember, that's all contingent on the flood control project downtown, so if the funding shifts for that, or if there's a delay, then we'd have to push this project a little bit farther down so that those two don't overlap.
So, follow up, Mr. Mayor. So right now, it's a placeholder. What, I don't know how to, best question, what place is it taking? If we leave it there, what project are you not working or planning for? Is there something else that you may be put to the side because we've directed you to put this in? I guess that's the best way to say that.
Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Olson, I, I think the best way for us to look at this from our standpoint is, you know, it, it's going to sit in the queue like the other projects until it's, it's turned, till it, till it comes back up. I don't really look at it as a workload item. Obviously, we consult this out and, and staff is heavily involved, but it's, it's not our people that would be doing the work. I think the bigger question for council is, is what, what doesn't get funded? Or what has to move to a different year because of this project? And it, it, you can ask that question of any project that's in the CIP, right? There's, we have so many dollars to work with on capital projects and we're not even talking about our maintenance backlog, okay? That's a whole separate thing. So, because we can't fund it all, at some point, a decision will have to be made whether we move forward with Project A or Project B.
One more question.
Continue.
Thank you. So, I've publicly shared my hesitancy in, in funding this bridge, partially because we do have pedestrian bridges that are nearby. You have presented something new to us by constructing a new bridge. I was more than hesitant in putting many dollars into the older bridge. So this is something different, something new to consider. But I still have a hesitancy leaving it in the CIP. So I guess that's, you know, right now, my question for you and my, a question for my colleagues on whether or not we leave it in the CIP. There's a lot of public interest in this, I'm fully aware of that. We're going to hear a lot by tomorrow morning and, and people that are in favor of this and opposed to this, and there's strong feelings on either side. But I guess, timing wise, does action need to be taken now or can it sit for a while?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman, or Alderwoman Olson, I, I think the, if the council's intention is to fund this project someday, then by all means, leave it in. And as we get closer to the project and the, the timelines start to become a little bit more aligned, you know, that's the time then where the rubber will meet the, the road, so to speak, where a decision would have to be made. Because right now, we're, we're saying we want to fund this in the CIP, but the dollars aren't there. And we're not working on the '25 budget or the '24 budget, we're going to work on the '23 budget. I think from a programming standpoint, what the finance department tries to do is they try to protect, project out debt load, right? And so if they know this is coming, then they're probably going to tell us as department heads, well, we're not going to be able to afford some of these other projects you have coming in the future, so they're going to have to move. I don't have a great way of answering your question, but it, it's...
And I, I appreciate that, so, thank you.
And Alderwoman Olson and Lance, one of the other items that also has to be considered into this, and you had made reference to this Lance, is the SRJB. They're looking for an answer on where, whether this Service River Joint Board, if this thing is going to be funded, if this thing is going to be built. They're working design right now on MI6. And if it gets washed or gets pushed down the line, they design their flood control for either having the bridge or not having the bridge. And if the council changes its mind again farther down the road, that could lead to more costs with having to go through some redesign with flood control on MI6. So I expect the SRJB to coming, to be coming for a definitive answer likely as we work into our 2023 budget moving forward. Also looking at the timeframe and, not to reference individual pages, but page 80 on this, on the actual CIP shows $650,000 approximate for funding. And I'm assuming that's some design work and, and things like that for, for the bridge and then 4.73 million coming in 2025 for the actual construction, at least by this document. And that's when most of the, the funding would have to be appropriated within, well, by 2024 for that 2025 construction year if that was going to be the process. So, one other, a couple of other points to consider as we work towards that May 2nd meeting is that the SRJB is going to be looking for direction, definitive direction, whether it's going to be to fund it or to tear it down. Alderman Janser.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask, maybe this is a question for Lance. So, we, it, it strikes me that, a couple of things. One, this, this has gone from, it seems like I remember 1.6 million or something like that to repair the current bridge to now ballpark five and a half million to build a new one. But isn't it, is it also true that we're going to have costs of tearing down the existing bridge either way?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Janser, that's correct. In, in these estimates, there is a placeholder for that, for that cost.
Okay, that's in there.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Evans.
So here's the thing, as I'm hearing, is like, we don't have to make a decision tonight, right? We have a bit of time, right? We made a decision a couple of months ago, four to three, to keep it in the CIP and I don't think there's a motion on the table to, to change that. And, you know, let's cross each bridge as it comes. That's sort of funny, Ann Street Bridge. So, we don't have to, we don't have to do anything tonight, but, you know, I mean, we will have to, but we have some time to, you know, sort of think about things and, you know, whether it still comportes with our Magic City aspirations and, and if so, how we're going to fund that.
Correct, but I think the mayor did bring up a good point that I, I failed to consider and, and that is the design timeframe for the flood control improvements. And the way that I see this, I, I just don't, I don't see a future for the existing Ann Street Bridge. Because even if we decided that we are going to fund a, a new structure just based on what we receive back from the railroad on comments, just physically, I don't think this is going to work. And so, we could probably spend a lot of money to try to find a way to save a portion of it or try to raise the bridge, but I think the, the better money, the long term, if, if the council and the city want to fund this, is to probably build a new structure that's going to last 100 years.
Right, and is ADA compliant and more accessible to our residents?
Our existing structure is 100 some years old.
Yep.
So, even though it's in good shape today, 30 years from now, it might not be.
Yep.
Mr. City Manager.
If I can weigh in on this, Alderwoman Evans is correct, we're not asking you to make a decision, this is just a discussion tonight. So there will be no action by the council. But to kind of expound a little bit more on, on Lance's presentation and, and to also kind of agree somewhat with the mayor. So, the number you have in front of you is just the replacement on the bridge. And so, not only is there an impact in the design timeframe for MI6, but this also affects the cost of MI6 at the end of the day. Because if we're telling them that Ann Street Bridge remains, they have to design that in. And there's additional costs to the SRJB as well as the city of Minot, over and above the 5.4 million for the construction of the bridge to make this work. Another point I want to lay out here and, and the, for full transparency is, again, as we look at this financially for the future, we, we kind of, kind of pre-commit some, some funding obligation in the future for this if this remains in the CIP. And right now, what I've directed staff to do is to consider a special assessment district to help pay for half of this bridge, the Ann Street Bridge downtown, which means that right now, the way this is built in the CIP, and this is all, this is a draft, council has the ability to change this if you don't agree with it, or the community doesn't agree with it. But I think the downtown and the neighborhood to the north of the river benefit the most from this, and I think there should be some financial commitment on their part to contribute to this if, if we're building this on behalf of the community. So right now, the way it's built in the CIP is 50% of the cost of that bridge, approximately 2.7 million. The revenue slated for that is a special assessment district to gain that revenue to pay for half of it. So I want that out there in full transparency, so that the public can respond, the council can think through that and talk through that going forward. I guess, ultimately, as you're, as you're talking about this decision going forward, and we've had this conversation numerous times, and ultimately, as city manager, I would kind of just prefer that we make the decision and move on, because I'm getting kind of tired of going back and forth of its in, its out. So I'd kind of like to make the decision and commit one way or the other. And again, as I tell people all the time, I move at the speed and the direction of a majority of the council. So, and right now, the direction of a majority of the council is that this is in the CIP and we're going to continue moving forward with this. And I'll continue to do that if that's the direction of the majority of the council. But just some things to consider, let's assume for a minute that we can find $5.4 million to build this bridge downtown. My question to the council and to the community is, is this the highest priority investment for our downtown that we can make? We're in the middle of trying to figure out, how do we repurpose some properties and buildings downtown when Trinity Hospital transitions out to the new hospital? We're still trying to figure out, how do we develop potentially the parking garages downtown? We've talked in economic development about the importance of creating a living environment downtown and how do we spur residential apartments and condos downtown? And so I guess my question is, if we have $5.4 million to invest in downtown, is this the highest priority? Does this give the biggest return on, on investment? Does this create the biggest economic impact for the city of Minot as a community and for our downtown region? Is this the, the best way to spend that $5.4 million? I'm not going to give you an answer to that, I have my own personal opinions, but that's not my job. I just, I just want the community and the council to think through that. If we have $5.4 million, is this the highest priority? Is this going to do the most good and have the biggest economic impact on our community and quality of life impact to our downtown area for the foreseeable future for sustainability? And anyway, I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Other questions, Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. Lance, real quick, I, I got a handful of questions. Proposed cost of the demo, any idea? I know you had, it's kind of fixed in there, but can you shoot from the hip what that was?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Pittner, we're, we're thinking probably around that $180,000 to $200,000.
Okay. If I may continue?
Continue.
Can we do it later? We talked about, we, and, and again, I'm not trying to kick this down the, the road, but if it's designed, does it have to be invested in right now? You know, we talked about, if we took the Ann Street Bridge out, we might lose our easement with the railroad and we'll never get it back. And that was kind of our conversation a couple of months ago, that was maintaining access so we can maintain an easement. It sounds like we got to go back to the square one and renegotiate it and easement. If we designed flood control and, and MI6 to have this bridge to be a component of it, but we built it in 2030, let's just say, is that possible? To negotiate it with the railroad at that point? What, what's your, I guess, amount of confidence that that could be accomplished?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Pittner, my understanding from the railroad is, kind of those, those points that I had listed before, if, if we check all those boxes, then they're at least going to sit down and, and consider this. So, they want to make sure that their freight rail traffic is safe. That's their bottom line, they want to move freight. And so, if we meet their guidelines and we negotiate a new easement, because this, this bridge is going to shift a little bit to where it is from where it is presently. And the existing easement that we have covers the existing bridge and the existing bridge only, and only when it's in operation, which it hasn't been for a while. So, it sounded to us when we talked with their folks that, that you might as well just consider that easement dead.
Okay.
Continue.
And then, as far as the green space, we'll call it, where the railroad GOB is, their office, i- is there a proposed use for that land at this point or a partnership, whether it be with parks? Again, I'm not trying to say that there is, but is there any talk or discussion of who's going to be using that land?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Pittner, I would say no. Maybe some high level discussions, but nothing, nothing concrete.
Okay. And then, final question, as far as phasing of MI6, planning, design, can we get an update on that after council? Where those things are and just any kind of update is how this is going to affect it versus, if you go down this road with it there, if you don't go with it, it's going to be a levy, it's going to be a flood wall? And just get some definitive answer, I see Dan coming up.
Yeah, Dan would be the best one to answer that.
He's going to teach me right now.
Our SRJB representative.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, like the mayor said, the, the Service River Joint Board is, is waiting on an answer on, is the Ann Street Bridge going to stay here or go? You know, they'll, they'll design around whatever you want, but they don't want to spend the additional money doing whatever needs to be, whether it's, you know, right now, it could be levy all along there. If the bridge goes in, we may need to transition some of that to flood wall, which is much more expensive. They need to take into account where the peers are going to set. All of those things that they're in accordance with, you know, the core guidelines for all this stuff. That's, that's why, you know, they need an, an answer soon, so they can move forward. MI6 hasn't stopped, we're, we're still working on the remainder part of it. And in fact, we're going to be having a public input meeting here probably towards the end of the month. But, like I said, a, a decision needs to be made on the Ann Street Bridge from the Service River Joint Board side of things, so we can direct the consultants as to which way to proceed.
Okay.
Continue.
Thank you. And this is, I know, I'm not going to hold, this isn't gospel, from, from the drawing that we received, it seems that there's a ramp on the north side and then a ramp on the south side. Is there possibility to drop the ramp on top of the levy? Like you have walking paths throughout, over by the dog park, stuff like that?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, anything's possible, but, you know, when you start looking into maintenance of the levy, long-term maintenance and things you'd have to do to it, I would say it's pretty slim. Just with the elevations of what the levy's going to be versus the bridge and everything, so the ramp would probably be the, the best option.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions about MI6 while we have Dan at the podium? Thank you, Dan. Any other questions for Mr. Meyer at this time on the CIP or any others? I will just denote too, that with the bridge clearly having to come down, there at least has been some high level talks of repurposing the metal portion that does span the railroad tracks potentially in use at one of our parks. But that would certainly have to probably try to find some funds to move it as it's not likely an easy or cheap process as one of our other, let's call it taxing entities might find it useful for another part. But very high level, nothing definitive and that probably can, conversation can continue now that at least it's realized that the bridge itself is not going to stay where it's at in, in the form that it's at moving forward, regardless of what decision is made on the CIP. Any other questions for Lance on the CIP as a whole? If not, our next meeting, May 2nd, will be the point where final determination for adoption on the CIP and/or changes will be taking place. In the meantime, if you do, if we have questions, please reach out to Lance, I would expect some feedback as well from, from the community regarding this project or many other projects. I would suggest diving in and just reference page 25, if you're looking for an overview of just what all the individual projects are, and then you can control F on the PDF to search an individual name in any of that and it helps speed along the search for individual projects on questions. Any other discussion on this item? If not, Alderwoman Evans.
So, folks may have noticed that last week, in an effort to help Public Works get the, the streets and stuff plowed downtown, is the city opened the parking garages up for residents and visitors to park in, to get off the streets. And it was received very well, businesses and residents and visitors really utilized them and we still are digging out down there, still stuff that needs to be moved around and with more snow perhaps coming this weekend. I would like to make a motion to keep those garages free to the public until the end of the month on April 30th, so we can get downtown cleaned up and people still using and frequenting downtown and our businesses down there.
Second?
We have motioned to keep the parking ramps, we're talking both Central and the Renaissance ramp, open until the end of the month. Alderwoman Evans, second by Alderman Pittner, discussion on the motion. Alderwoman Olson.
Thank you. What would be the potential cost? Do we have a, an estimate of the, the income that we would be losing?
It'd be 11 days of parking. So, what do we?
But what, what income do we get typically in approximately 11 days?
Might look to our finance director on revenue from either any of the contracts or monthly fees that are already being collected and potentially some of the challenges, I think by some software changes that recently were implemented. Dave?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't have that information off of the top of my head. I do know that it's very common whenever we have issues and have the gates open at the parking ramp, that we get questions asking from permit holders, asking if they are going to get credit on their bill or if we're going to extend a free period to them as well. The process for maintaining the billing for the parking structures is a very manual process. We just had crews in over the weekend on this Golive project with utility billing software and they are the same people that handle the billing for the parking ramps. Today was the first day on the new system and we did have a few minor things that we had to address, so they are inundated with issues and work related to the new utility billing structure. So I have, I'm a little bit, have some reservations with making major changes. We have had some mechanical issues with the equipment in the parking ramps that is associated with the power problems that we had here about a week ago. So, there's some other issues associated with that too, some difficulties that we're having that, that limits our ability. Essentially, if we're going to open them up, we wouldn't have the ability to give tickets or coupons for free parking. It would have to be in the form of an electronic pass or we'd have to open them up completely.
Does that answer your question, Alderwoman Olson? Not at all?
It, yeah, it does, and I, I guess, I'm, I'm thinking too, and I was thinking of those that pay for long-term parking, how that would be accommodated and it probably would not be a simple accommodation.
And Mr. Mayor and, and council members, to complicate this as well, we have some owners of apartment buildings where we bill them. We run a report every month to see which of the parking passes have been used. Instead of us trying to maintain or issue new parking passes for every tenant that moves in or moves out, we run a report, any of them that have been issued for the month, we bill them accordingly. So, it puts the onus of managing the, the passes on the apartment owners to simplify that process a little bit. So then, we'd have to figure out a way to rectify that as well. So, there's a number of complicating factors that come into play here.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Evans.
But we've also had them open for six days for free.
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Evans, they were opened up, I opened them up on Saturday.
I thought it was Thursday.
I believe, I believe there were maybe a couple of the exit and gates that were opened up.
But we've had a few days of, no.
Yes, but I, I opened all of them up.
That we have to contend with regardless if we do this or not. Right of the same kind of people coming forward, usage patrons and monthly owners, right, for those three or four days.
I believe when the, the power bump on Tu, and then on Tuesday, I'd been notified that the Renaissance ramp had some gate failure and some folks were not able to actually get in there when the blizzard had started. So, we, we've had some challenges over there, so I don't think all of them have been open the entire time. But that's at least what I'm aware of. I'm aware of. Other questions for our finance director or comments? Alderman Pittner?
Maybe, it might not be for Dave, it might actually be for our city attorney. Are we obligated to provide a discount if we open them up to people that hold passes? Is there, is there any legal obligation to provide a refund for those?
City Attorney Kelly, Kelly Hendershot, I suppose at the end of the day, they are still receiving some benefit?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Mr. Mayor and Alderman Pittner, I haven't reviewed the agreement that the city has with the individual parking permit holders. However, if they're paying for the service, they should receive the benefit of having a parking space. I don't know if there would be any concern about too many parking spaces being occupied if they're opened up. I'm not sure if that would be an issue, but we would want to be able to provide them the benefit of having a spot if they're paying for that service.
Continue.
I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, and I don't want to be in trouble for doing that, but I guess that's kind of my thought. If we, if we can keep the streets clean, clear of cars, even driving through there today, it's, it's a lot of snow. It's very hard to move snow. If we can keep patrons off the streets, in the ramps, there's possibility of another, I've heard 11 to 20 inches of snow this weekend. Don't throw anything at me when I leave, I'm just reading what I read on the weather app. So I think if we have some trained behavior for people to stay in the ramps and off the road so we can move some snow and keep downtown open, I think it's a good move. I'll support it. And like I say, the only reason I bring up the legal, if there are ramps, and if we can provide that service to citizens, I'm willing to do that through a very unusual, record-setting, unprecedented snow event, so.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I would like to point out that we did have some folks that early last week, in anticipation of the storm, came and purchased passes so that they would have access to the parking ramps. They purchased a one-month pass just so that they would have access to the parking for the storm. I think it's about $9 a day it would cost them to park in there. So obviously, you know, after it was more than three or four or five days, it was advantageous for them to purchase a one-month pass. So we did have a few folks that did that last week before the storm. So while I can't guarantee what will happen, I would guess what the result would be for those folks, so.
For the questions or comments? Thank you, Dave. Alderman Pittner?
I'll make a comment, and I appreciate Dave's comments there, and he just probably put it on her radar. Again, I always try to bring this stuff back to my own life. I took my kids to a movie, I took them to the movie Onward, and it was right before COVID hit. And then I spent about $40 to $50 to take them to a movie, and then COVID shut everything down, and it went on to Disney Plus the next weekend. So I kind of wasted $50 taking my kids to a movie, but a pandemic, and a pandemic hit, and people adjusted to try to make people's lives easier and try to accommodate people downtown. I think it's still the right move. I'll support it again. I feel for the people that bought passes in, in preparation to the storm. The storm was worse than anybody had thought. I think the highest total I'd heard in prediction was 30 inches of snow. We've got 36 inches plus another foot. So, so again, I'll be receptive to, and be reactive to what happened. So again, I can feel for those who, who have passes and that bought them in, in preparation. Again, I still think we, we need to be reactive as a government, so I'll, I'll leave my comments there.
Further discussion on the motion to approve? Mr. City Manager?
I guess I'll put Dan Jonison on the spot. I think the key factor here is how soon the street parking will be available downtown. And so what's the plan on that? Obviously, we've got a lot of snow, we don't have anywhere to put it. We have contractors working all over the city. So what's the plans for prioritization of downtown, getting snow hauled out, those kinds of things?
Mr. Jonison?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, we don't intend to haul the downtown unless you want us to hire the contractors. I don't have the staff to dedicate and the equipment to haul the downtown, and that's really the only option down there. There's nowhere to pile it, there's nowhere to push it. If we push it, it goes on the sidewalk and it fills everything in front of the businesses. So we can haul it, we can hire contractors. It'll probably take three or four days with a bunch of contractors' equipment, but my estimate is you're probably going to spend $20,000 to $30,000 a day to haul it in the downtown. Our intention now was it's passable, there's some parking, and there is parking garages available, and we're going to let Mother Nature melt it. So I know that's maybe not what everyone wants to hear, but that was my plan right now unless someone directs me elsewhere.
Questions or comment for our Public Works Director?
Isn't?
Alderwoman Evans.
Isn't downtown part of our snow emergency plan? Like the hauling?
Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Evans, no clearing of the downtown is, not hauling.
Okay. Actually, not hauling it, I think underscores the importance of having the garages for free, right? It's because it's going to, parking's going to be tied up probably even longer, right, if that snow is still sitting there until Mother Nature takes course. So even more reason, I think, to have a place for our residents and visitors downtown, to have a place to park and not decide not to go downtown, right? Or, you know, because they can't park.
Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, I guess, just my opinion, but I think that's the cheaper alternative to providing additional parking in the downtown area.
Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. No, and I'll second, but Dan, I'd rather not haul it. If we're going to let Mother Nature take its course, I think, again, further, further reason to accommodate businesses downtown and, and the parking downtown and people that do live downtown, keep them open. And again, I think it's the cheaper of the, of the two actions.
Other questions for Mr. Jonison? Thank you, Dan. Mr. Finance Director?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, due to the wonders of today's technology, I got an update while I was sitting back there from our property maintenance superintendent. It looks like they think they have maybe resolved some of the issues that were a result of the power problems that we had a week ago. They're anticipating that the equipment should be back online tomorrow unless it's some other unforeseen mechanical issue, but we may have some other options available to us, but we won't know for sure until tomorrow. Make sure, once we can make sure that the equipment is functioning properly. And what that might look like would be passes that would be good for two hours of free parking or four hours of free parking or, or something in that nature that we could issue and have accessible. That would, you know, it would require some logistics for people to get those passes, but it allows us some control over how many people can go in and out. We'd be able to guarantee that people that are paying for the parking have access to the spots that they're paying for as well.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? I think my final thought on this is, given the fact that we have four feet of snow sitting out there, and the potential of either rain and/or, I've seen up to 20 inches of snow, depending on how this falls, it's really tough to say that $20,000 to $30,000 a day for three days of hauling at this point without knowing what is coming down the line with this coming weekend. The cheaper option is to raise the gates for a period of time until we can get everything widened out and then utilize our city crews on our own schedule without cars tying up a lot of that space. That's probably the more fiscally responsible aspect. If it takes us a little longer to clear that snow after we get through this next event and just have those ramps opened up for us a period of time at least to get us through the weekend, I can support that, but beyond that, it also costs money to run those. So we'll get through the, this period, at least in my opinion, and, and go from there. My thoughts. Final call for discussion on the motion to approve. Seeing none, the motion is to approve, please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes. Motion is approved. Any other items under other, other discussion or miscellaneous items? If not, we will move into the liaison reports. Alderman Pittner?
I have nothing. My committees meet this week.
Alderman Janser?
We have a liaison committee meeting coming up on Thursday at Badlands at noon, and more to follow.
Alderman Ross?
Zoning Ordinance Steering Committee, their report was in the, part of the manager's, city manager's report, and our next scheduled meeting is going to be probably sometime in the end of summer.
Alderwoman Evans?
My meetings are this week, but the Family Shelter Broadway Circle bidding closed on April 12th, so hopefully we'll have some news to report soon on what the bids look like and who, who project he's going to choose for our new family shelter.
Alderwoman Olson?
Mr. Mayor, I have a fairly long list this time, and part of my reason in voting no on the last item was meeting with downtown business owners who have some concerns about management of, of the parking garages and, and passes that they have paid for. And so just in respect to them, you know, it's interesting that I had had that information just a few weeks ago. So that is the reasoning for my, my no vote. I was recently part of the Dental Strategic Planning Task Force, which is a very interesting committee. It's a group of dentists, dental hygienists, dental assistants, and elected officials from around northwest North Dakota. This is a result of us building a CTE. You build it and they will come. There is a huge shortage of dental hygienists and dental assistants in northwest North Dakota, and even as the planning and the construction or the reconstruction of that building is taking place, this task force is meeting to get the program up and running so that they will be able to have students in August of 2023 to start filling some of those needs. So they were thrilled that there would be a location in Minnetonka to offer that program. Just this afternoon, I sat in on the City Hall Building Committee meeting. We were talking furniture for the building, and I think all of you will be happy to hear that we'll have a furniture fair coming up in May, and so some of the options that are available, we'll able, we'll be able to sit in them and, and give our opinions on what we think is best for the new City Hall. I was part of the SIRS Basin Planning Council Executive Board meeting last week. One item of interest that will come before us, we assume, is additional funding for the Business Accelerator Fund. That has been very successful through SIRS Basin Planning. They will be, we anticipate that they will be meeting with the Magic Fund Steering Committee this Friday morning. I'm bringing that initial request to them, and if given the approval from Magic Fund Steering Committee, we will be taking action on it later this spring. As Alderman Janser mentioned, we do have the Liaison Committee on April 21st, and, and then coming up also, the Comp Plan for the Housing and Community Character is scheduled for August, excuse me, April 28th. That's all.
Thank you, Alderwoman Olson. Alderman Padugula?
Thank you. The Commission on Aging did not meet because of the Good Friday holiday. County Planning Commission is plugging along with its Sisyphean task of revising our zoning and planning codes for the county. The Emergency Resource Council had its monthly meeting and a good presentation on the effect of the drought on burning bands and things like that. And with this latest rain, maybe things won't be quite as, as problematic as they have been. And then the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee had a meeting and went over preliminary draft of their goals, and also we've had distributed to us a very detailed input from citizens in terms of what they're looking at from the city. 1,037 people responded to the survey, and I read through each of the, in addition to summarizing them in a, in a statistical fashion, they also had comments from people. I read through all of them, and it was very interesting to get a sense of what the average person is looking for in terms of the city. I think the question was something like, when you go to other cities, what do you see that you wish we had here or something like that? And a lot of, most of the input was in terms of quality of life issues, places to walk, places to recreate, you know, clean air, things like that. So I think we're, we're doing well, but it'll certainly give us a lot of food for thought in terms of where we want to, as a committee, where we want to see the comprehensive plan go and how we want to kind of encourage development of the community. And also is another thing, besides the response to the snowstorm, that makes me proud about being here. When you think of all the awful things that are happening in other cities throughout the country, the crime, the degradation of the environment, problems with educational institutions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, makes me really appreciate living here. So that's what's been happening on the committees that I represent us on.
Thank you, Alderwoman Padugula. Couple of different committees, MAC EDC is meeting on Wednesday of this week, and Task Force 21, we are supposed to be out at a ribbon cutting, out at Monique Air Force Base for their indoor shooting range. That is, has been postponed. Three feet of snow, I think was enough to postpone that. So I would expect that to be coming down the line. There's also been weekly TIF meetings with developer from Epic companies and city staff. Didn't make today's, but have been sitting on the rest of them. Epic and Harold actually were in front of the Monique Public School Board two weeks ago, and that, that board did unanimously vote to approve tomorrow. Epic is going before the Ward County Commission. That is the last leg of the, let's call it the, the TIF triad, I guess, for whether or not that the county is going to support it or not support it. So I will be attending that meeting just to sit in, and if there are any questions brought forward, and I'm not sure if CM is, City Manager is going to be there or not, but I know that there are a lot of other folks going to be there for the presentation. Outside of that, the rest of my time has been spent snowballing. So that is, oh, thank you, yes. I've decided that we are, yes, we are going to postpone the garbage cleanup, and I'm not putting a date on it because I put two dates down, and we've had projected snow on each one of those dates, and a lot of it. So I'm not even, we're going to need flamethrowers to go find the garbage right now, but we'll wait for the snow to melt, and then we'll set another date, and we'll go out and clean up, and clean up the mess. But I will say this, I've been very pleased with the amount of volunteers that have come forward and businesses that have come forward with a large number of people all willing to pitch in and help out. So that's been greatly appreciated. We'll find it eventually, so. With that, that is the end of the reports, and we're just in line for adjournment. Motion by Alderman Pittner to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Olson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.